Welcome, everybody. I'm glad you're welcome to start the regular meeting of the Leonard Village Council. Today is September 11th, 2023. I guess we all probably thought about September 11th in 2001 today at some point. As always, we'll always remember that. Don't fade a day for a lot of people, for our country. So with that, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and the good term of location. A pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gary, thank you for the day you came to us. Thank you for providing everything over safely. Thank you for the great wisdom as we begin today's meeting. Thank you. Okay, with that, we have a roll call for attendance in the lower council.
President McDonald?
Here.
Alex Kennedy?
Yes.
Yvonne Pellicott?
Yes.
Senator Swett?
Here.
John Hawkins?
Here.
And a note for the record that Dr. Laurie Zellner is present and the treasurer's universe is excused. The council has before the minutes of our August 14th regular meeting. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections? If none, motion to approve could be in order?
I want a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August 14th.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of a motion to approve the minutes of August 14th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, minutes are approved. Council has before proposed agenda for this evening. There are a couple of corrections and one addition. The treasures report will be for August 2023, as will the accounts payable for August of 2023. And the accounts payable in the major fund, the amount should be $1,838.55. And then for council's indulgence, I would appreciate if we could add a festival committee as item number one under new business. And we'll smooth the other two down. Are there any other changes, edits? If none, a motion to approve the proposed agenda as amended would be appreciated.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the treasures report for August 2023. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to that report? If none, a motion to receive and file an approved report would be in order.
I want a motion to receive and file the treasures report for August 2023.
One second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the August 2023 treasures report. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please, Laurie?
McDonald?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swett?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pellicott?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to the accounts payable for August of 2023. Are there any questions on the accounts payable? If not, a motion to approve and pay the bills would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $12,431 in consensual general, major $1,838.55, local $1,800, mill park recreation $100.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the August bills. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call for that as well, please?
Pellicott?
Yes.
Swett?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, all in favor. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody here that needs to speak to something that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on then to new business, which we amended to include the strawberry festival. We'd like to address the councils about the future and where do we go from here?
Right, so I didn't know. Seth and I was president as of our meeting. When did we even have that?
Thirteenth February.
Yeah, in August. So it was like a month ago now. Don't really have a plan. There are nobody wanting to step up to be the president at this point. So we decided to do it first more people. And this last month, I think we have one right now. But again, we think we had, we needed like at least 12 to keep it going with the club we have and currently there. We needed at least 12 committee members and we only had eight. Or we do have ten, we have ten.
We have ten.
We have ten. But not everybody even showed up today. Now it was ten.
Well, it was shortened for today anyway.
No, no, I'm talking for the festival, for our meeting.
Oh, oh.
And the festival. Like all 10 of our community members actually showed up. So with that in mind, we're just trying to figure out where do we go from here? Like I'm trying to help them move on if they want to keep going with it. But if we can't get help, it's kind of to the point right now, like what do we do?
Understood. First, before we really, if we have any questions and want to go further, I'm gonna publicly express my appreciation to the festival committee, to the officers, and to Kyle as the chair for the services that you have in the village. Nobody knows better than us probably what it takes to do what we do. And we understand that it can be a tough road ahead, especially the festival day itself. I mean, you can plan your brains out, but it's like an army operation. It never goes according to plan, very rarely. So, so well done from us to you. And of course, we speak for the residents and all, all the people that have, you know, had the benefit of the reference.
If you, if you can't get the people to help you, would it, I know you don't want to hear this, but would it help to lessen the activities?
No, it can, but then there's just, I mean,
I mean,
Yes, it can.
I mean, it has, well, from the first, the first festival to what we had this year, it's like huge.
The only activity you can really have is kids out there.
Right.
We don't have many.
I think exactly, we're capable, we're exactly.
That's the real thing.
That's like the main.
I mean, if you don't have the people to run it, it's, you need to close down the whole thing.
Right.
Right, because you don't have the people. Something's better than nothing.
Because we had, we asked for people starting in February this last year. Volunteers, we needed volunteers, we needed committee members. I think we're on line at least, at least once a month, if not more. Asking for people. We did it some the day of, I think.
We fished them out of their yards, basically.
Are you doing anything?
Right. But yeah, besides that, it's, it was just, I mean, I was out there for 18 hours that day. And I was like, it's just, it's, that's too much, I can't do that.
You have a lot of recommendations from people, but it all involves money, right? And to reduce, we couldn't maintain half of what we do. So like the food trucks, they don't come out. This was the first time ever this year that we got them to come out willingly, without guarantees of minimums and things like this.
I know, I sure am.
Yeah. And then, you know, vendors, there's nothing to walk around and do. And they don't show up. That really hurt us this year. They just failed as soon as they thought there was maybe a break and then they didn't have a break. So to cut that out doesn't really change. We don't put a lot of effort in on the day of for them. They do their own work. So that's not even, it's work upfront, but the day of is our hardest, or the weekend, I should say, is our hardest part. That and getting money coming in, which is getting increasingly harder. Costs are going up. Things that used to be for free are, it's just not an option. They don't exist. A lot of our vendors shut down, they've closed. So we get a lot of, oh, you're going to the most expensive place. You're not trying to get this for free. Like, that's not the case. You know, it's just not the case anymore. So it's getting increasingly difficult. Not only people, it's a mix of people and money. We're still looking to get our final numbers in, but we're down at least 1,000, I think, uh, yeah. It was our loss this year.
So you mean you're in the negative?
Yeah.
For a fund balance?
Yeah.
From what we started.
From what we started.
Yes. We had money in the bank, but it's, it's almost 2,000 less than what we started.
Correct. So just technically, we had like 11,000 in the bank. Now we're down to like that.
Okay.
So we still have money, but at the same time, in order to run this festival, which we need to put, which we just found out, we need like 11,000 more. Like now we need 2,000 more dollars for next year in order to do the same thing out of business up.
Well, it's a good time to start working on it. You know, the,
No, I mean, that's why we wanted to come. Bringing it up to you guys, we're under you as a committee. I want to make you aware of what happened this year as far as with us and our connection situation back. And just like, it's, I think Charlotte's going to be stepping down too. We were actually fighting, I mean, over this. So. Because,
Because you wanted, you wanted to do it, she didn't. No, I'm kidding, I'm not kidding. I'm not,
No, it's just, just like going back and forth, trying to do it.
No, it is, it is.
COVID changed everything, too.
It did.
Because having been on the pretty in the past, all like, we talked about all those things we used to get for free.
Yeah.
They were no longer free.
No.
And it's just, and the same thing, all the vendors going out of business during COVID. All those people that we had that supported us, they're just evaporating.
I mean, even the parade, people wouldn't come for free. People wouldn't come, so we're kind of at like a,
Yeah, crossroads. Yeah. Yeah. And everybody worked so hard and put so much effort and soul into it. I mean, honestly, you know, great group of people.
I, I for one, I'd like, I, I think we should continue to, and maybe we need to support you in other ways that we can explore. You know, to, if we can't get your bodies, we can help in other ways.
Or is it possible to lean on the fire department a little harder and have their lawyers come and have their pitching scenes as they are completely separated from us?
Well,
and deliver nothing else?
That, that,
And we give them all the,
Probably not. Because they devote their efforts towards the manning and maintaining the Sunday production and, you know, they clean the station and they do, do the prep work and all that. I can't say that's, it's an absolute no, but I, they, they have, they struggle too having enough volunteers because they're not being paid, you know, the workers, the firefighters that matter here. They do it mainly because it's PR for the department to be out and, you know, leading the residents and having people come in. And yeah, look at what they have to charge for Sunday now. I think when I moved here, it was like a buck and a quarter.
Right, now it's like, so.
Yeah. And they still, they were down again, but they had planned, they had reduced their purchases. So they still made some money this year, but it wasn't like in your past, you know, so. And they're concerned, but they want to continue. I mean, they want to continue doing it. And we've always done it, coordinating it with them. So I'd like to continue to explore that. So hopefully you're here to offer some suggestions on going forward, what you would like to see.
Literally, I'm like, all right, here, talking to Kyle, and it's like, well, there's still enough money in the bank to throw one more festival. But part of that struggle again is getting the money. I mean, I think we spent and exhausted every effort to just get the income in for it to be in the bank, right? So every, I'm sure everyone's aware, but in case you weren't, you know, all of our fundraising is for the next year's festival. We into that here is whatever's in the bank's that year's budget. And, and I think we ended up taking some extra money out of what we were bringing in and then we didn't make back. And that's where we have a little bit of a deficit this year. But we could definitely throw another festival if we weren't putting on, if we're like, that's the last one. We're not going to put all this effort into the fundraising. It took three of us almost every week, every day, like trying to feed and work with people to get funding. And it was exhausting and Oxford does not even recognize us. So what, what are we limited to? It's our leader, well, it's more than that. It's like six businesses right here, right?
Here they go.
And they don't want to up there. I mean, they, they've been supporting us for years and years, but they don't want to get any more than they gave 10 years ago, five years ago, I don't know. So they're still giving, but they're not giving more and everything's costing more. So we're kind of like, you know, we, there's not enough of us to do additional fundraisers. We talked about off-season fundraisers, but we're exhausted. So just for myself personally, I got kids in school. This is their time. I got my body, I've got all these other things. My catechism starts to, they're all short volunteers, mine's spread thin there. So to do off-season fundraising, if we don't have more people to help pitch in for that, we can't do year-round. It's enough to do it. It's a six-month stint, we're killing ourselves, let alone go another six months trying to make it work for, it's not, well, unfortunately, obviously, in this room, I'm not speaking to you because you know what it is to give, but other people are not coming out to put their hands in this. So how badly do we want it? Right? So I don't know.
Well, I mean, that's the message we publish. Unless we get volunteers, this is going to be the last one.
And I literally did today, 19 minutes before leaving my house, somebody said, can, somebody in London tell me when the festival's next committee meeting is? And I said, this is the VPI of the festival and I'm letting you know, this, without volunteers, we will not have another meeting. Generally, we meet in January though, just so you know. Like we had a call out and we're waiting for responses. So, and then there was one other person that said, following. And I'm like, I hope you're asking because you want to help. And if you do, respond to me as opposed because, you know, just maybe do it every week. Yeah. Every week, if we don't get volunteers, we're not going to have a festival.
Right.
So it's, because then people don't stay on the council, you know, beside, they may check in on it once in a while. Like they keep seeing this message.
Well, a couple of years ago, it's not this year, a year before, we literally went and told people, this is making a big year, coming out of COVID, if you don't support this, it's probably not going to happen again. We mentioned, if everyone came out, but the problem is for the next year.
Yeah.
So it's like, you might get that support when I put it out there and I stress it and I stress it. Well, do you have that kind of energy every year to be like, literally every year is the last year if you don't step up, right? Every year is the last year if you don't support us.
If people want to do it, they just don't know it yet.
Oh, that's how I got the committee.
It's like accepted to it, see, and it's like, okay, I like this, I'll do it.
Well, we don't say because you like it, even, we like each other and that's all we say, right? So, but it's,
It's hard and it's rewarding, you know, people can look at it that way instead of just saying, oh, I gotta go work this, this festival. They want to work it because it's fun and it's rewarding. When they see people smiling and kids having fun and,
Having a good time.
Yeah.
But it's not sticky, right? So we continually lose people year after year in that way.
Just keep, it's reminding, getting reminded of, somebody's going to listen.
It's unfortunately, it's the same people you see in this room. We just exhaust ourselves and we back out because we get burned out.
We get burned out.
And we're not getting new people and then we recycle back. But the people who set out willing to help you if you really need it are people who already retired from this committee and said, well, if you're bad, you know,
I am.
Dyer, I'll step back in and I know they can't keep it up. They can't do it year after year. It's like, I'll help you for this one year, but I'm not going to keep because I already retired.
Say, well, keep taking your vitamins and you'll feel better.
Better the rest. So I guess this is more of a like preparation that I, it would be silly to not utilize, because I think we have enough funds for another, another year. But we just don't have enough hands to get the outreach, to get the support, to get the funding. We have less people than ever. And we just can't put that same statement to it. We're just going to die trying and, and we're not getting the praise from the community. Day of, the people are there, they're having so much fun, they're going to stay. Now over the internet, right? Something, something, something. Actually, this year wasn't too terrible, but,
They all believe that something.
Always false.
And, and nobody to step up.
They complain or they don't want to offer.
We always say, we're, we're happy to have you in the committee if they have money.
Yeah, always, it has to always.
It's, I mean, wow, before you complain.
So that's what it is. You know, we all live here, so we do know people who are willing. My phone number is the one that's posted on the, on the flyer. We have printed flyers and they're on our Facebook page. But we're, we're really winding down where there's just nobody else stepping up. We've got one person who, who actually did a reach out and one that was an outreach, says, I'll do a little bit more, but not necessarily be, you know, actively throughout the year, help us a little bit more than they have in the past, which is still good, but it's not kind of enough, you know, to carry us for years.
You had two. What position was Charlotte?
Charlotte was the secretary and attorney of the vendors.
Oh, wow. I guess, yeah, two, a big positions.
Oh, yeah. Like I, I feel bad, but I'm like, it's, I can only do so much, you know, I don't know.
Well, and, and you guys didn't say, oh, you'll help like the weekend out or do some kind of stuff?
Yeah, I hope they can do some stuff.
But it's not the, the whole, like they're free.
Well, let me frame this in a slightly maybe different approach. And that is, is that I think it's premature to say, we can't do this anymore. I think we have to, I think we should try in January or February to have a meeting to get, talk, to contact former, you know, members, current members, it's called current members, and see if they're in or out. And then if we can get more members, the thing is, is that it's always been kind of a year-to-year struggle to keep enough people. It's not, I know it makes it harder, especially for leadership, to plan, but it's always kind of been that way. And the more you talk about dissolving or stopping it, it becomes this reality because people think, oh, it's all over. As soon as they hear that, you know, it's not going to happen, this is the last year, all interest is gone. You know, it, it almost makes it inevitable that you can't survive. So before we start spinning that story, why don't we try and see if we can't?
And everyone current is willing to hold out, right? But it's, the other members outside of who you see here are, are less physically able, right? They're, they've got some different things, they're doing their best, but we need gun guns, you know? We need some heavy lifters and some, I mean, it's a lot of physical work that we really need help with. So while they're saving it out, we need the arms, you know? Well, yes.
Maybe that, maybe that's something that within the festival committee, you can decide where the priority should be and how much time maybe we need to compress the festival. We didn't always have a street dance. And we used, and we used to have a Friday night event to kick off the festival and that came and went, you know, so.
Can we go back to a lot like, what's the Friday night?
We had bands, we had a band and there was a tent. We had, we had, you know, pop-up dinners and stuff like that. And then some were breweries and some of the other restaurants in the area can just honest every other year or whatever.
Oh, please, because house their children.
So, and, and you're, and believe me, we recognize the difficulty. It is hard to go back to the same commercial businesses every year and ask for a donation. But conversely, it's worth it to them to get recognized locally and have their name on a banner or, you know, it gives them the visibility they need to stay in business. So maybe I'm harking up the wrong tree, but, but before we start talking about burying it, let's see if we can work together in January or whenever you'd like to stop, meet and talk about it and see what we can put together. And then,
Also, I agree.
You guys, you guys, you guys did it, made, you made it a huge affair. I mean, like you said, between the food trucks. I mean, we were lucky if we got a dip and dock or whatever in years past. So the potential's there. And there's probably a couple of other areas maybe we could talk about. Making it more people-friendly or getting people back that may not be becoming now, so.
I think we've had a lot of new homes and families in the area that just don't know what it is, which is why though I am skeptical to downgrade and go smaller because I don't think it will draw them. I just don't. I think it becomes more who lives on the street. And that's what we, that doesn't help us because then we're not getting sponsors. Because who am I visible to? If we downsize, I mean, we've, we've made a big ramp up in the last few years to get bigger sponsorships and offer them something in return, like putting their names on t-shirts and making bigger banners than we had before. But if we kind of go smaller, I don't know that that will have the appeal to them because there's not the audience that they're really bringing it to.
It's not so much going smaller as becoming leaner and more efficient. Okay, if we talk about making it smaller, yeah, well, I mean, a business wants people to see what they're supporting. So if we, if we go in, like I say, this is, a lot of this is how we present ourselves. So we can talk about that in the spring, about what image do we want to have? Still community and gun. We need local community support from their, the businesses and our residents. And, you know, Leonard Trank, in the last census, we, we lost about 30 people. The village itself. The surrounding area didn't grow as expected either. So it, it, it's harder for that, to drive that economic engine when, when under those conditions. And then you throw COVID on top of that. So maybe just one more comment.
Maybe during Christmas by the party that we do in here can help set up a table for trying to recruit volunteers for the festival committee? I'm awful hard, people say, no, I don't want to help strawberry festival in front of the kids.
Well, we tried that at the sale and nobody talked to us, but didn't get the little kids to go. We gave them out a weekend, take a flyer and then we're going, you win, but we're trying.
The people that started the festival committee did it mainly because we had kids in school and this was another activity and it was just,
It's always about kids.
Yeah.
Kids, kids after, they need to know each other, they grow up knowing each other, they, they know each other as adults. It's, yeah.
And Laurie, you brought us for this one. And that's our area, we have to get volunteers for kids. Nobody will volunteer for those kids to deal with them. Yeah, I asked us if they can, because I, you know, I was saying, voice counts don't have to volunteer in that capacity anymore. I talked to Linda Marina, she had contacts, none of them panned out. I mean, I reached out to, that was the frustrating part. You know, I was really, really trying and just, and I can't where you guys are, are coming from. You know, and like I, I totally get it because I'm not in the community anymore. I felt like, I felt like it was taking, it was just taking so much out of me to put a lot in and then just, you know, that, I mean, I'm curious though, you know, I was just thinking about it since you guys were talking. If we could survey like people in the community and ask them like, what are the biggest draws that bring you to Strawberry Festival? You know, is it the band? Is it the parade? Or if there were like a top five, like if we had to look at streamlining a little bit because of like the length of the day, which the same thing, I usually do 16-hour days and sometimes I need to go for an hour and take a nap, you know, things like that. But is there a way we could compress it or something to make it where committee members aren't working so long? But find out what are people really coming for, if, you know? And maybe those would be the areas to concentrate on if we did something small.
We could do the, the,
Just curious, some of you guys, you know, who's come to.
I think the parade's still a little bit drop. Many people coming from the kids' home just because there's something for the kids to go to. I still think the car show was a drop and we have like, not this last year because of the annual year report. We had 24 when we thought of car show, let's mention.
And they came from all over. They, they're from Leonard, because I know something's suspicious.
Says car.
Um, we did have, we did go internationally this year. I had people come up from Canada, come to everywhere. So like we went international, we're, we're leaning out there.
And then they say, where's Leonard?
I'm always surprised how many people actually do know where it is. You, either they have a family member or something.
And you, either they have a family member or something, or bike ride with motorcycles. And they all go under this because they like the ride.
Well, what do you think about it? We had someone manning the table and as people came through the door, did, did you dread horses?
Yeah.
We got their attention and said.
When was that?
December.
December tenth, isn't it?
That's, that's, I guess people that are in front of your January meeting. So you could probably turn off your January.
And we'll approach the older children and say, do you want the Strawberry Festival? Give this to your mom and dad. You do have to wait that.
Well, and they're probably two years, you know, you don't tell them how old they are.
We can catch them as soon as they come in the door. And they come in, you go to the gingerbread houses. And have, have your paperwork ready, have your reports ready, push your, push your top five things that you love about the festival.
And then we get your, their name and phone.
Name, phone.
Yeah.
And have your volunteers at the Strawberry Festival. And then approach the older children, not the little ones, but the.
You know.
Eight, ten to twelve, they'll go home and say, ah, you guys should move out here in order, maybe we need help at the Strawberry Festival. So. Did I break the table? And then it's moving by itself.
I'd like, I'd like at least for you to leave this meeting knowing that we're interested and involved.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll see where that goes.
And again, we have enough funds to do one more, but if we just, we know where we have gaps, it's getting the money and.
It's nice to have a little cushion.
No, that's, no, that's good information to have.
Yeah.
And fundraising doesn't start till next year generally anyway, so, so we'll.
What do you think, what do you think about the table at the?
Oh, no, absolutely. I mean, they, Randy was at the concert in the middle.
And I was there last year, not promoting the festival, but I mean, I was here, I know.
Yeah, that's, that's great, it's before the meeting. You might pull in five, five or six people, you don't know. People who, maybe their mothers have nothing better to do.
Then we have to save the date card for the next meeting. If we have a meeting set in January, we say, here, why don't you come and, you know, I mean, make that part of their opinion poll.
Sure, and then, and then you'll have that paperwork to, to, to go from. What's the, what's the five most important things that you like about festivals?
Cause we do get a lot of parents with kids at the tree lighting.
Yeah, a lot.
That's what it's all about.
And their grandparents come in and they're still able to do stuff.
And Chris Santa, he plans to come back next year, which I thought was really cute booth and info. And he is one of the people that said, I'll do more, but obviously he's gonna have his own booth and his own flow he's working on, so he can't be. Cause he's like, oh, I'll do it, but you have to be able to, like, you have this and this. So if you can help us pull maybe some extra people who's at the parade, if you can help us scout more, if you can, what I, I need you to do you at the festival. That is great, you know? So again, we have some offers like that to do a little bit more, but it's, it's not gonna pull the weight that we've lost. So we're gonna take it wherever we can get it. I think everybody's willing to try to make it one more year, but if we don't get some solid things to come out of it, it's, and this is just a foreshadowing, like I, we're all sitting there going, you know, I don't know. Let's see what comes out of it and we're hoping we get more than just one.
How many else do you think we have for their festival? It was bigger last year. They came through here to, to vote on this and they have to come through the door.
Oh.
I mean, rather.
Yeah.
Have, have your strawberry stuff up there.
Not only, not only that, but it's the DJ and that, you could have a, you know, public service message.
Yes, yes.
Saying, you know, at the festival of Salmo above.
Save our festival.
Save the strawberries. The, I, I really think that's gonna be a good way to reach people. You know, people sit at home and they, oh, it's a great party, but I think there's just a lot of people who just sit there going, eh, somebody else take care of it.
Well, then that could start to occur.
And that's all, and then, but they don't realize that they really could be able to help, it could be great support. They don't think they have anything to talk about.
Right.
But you do. Let's not call it the, the last year, let's just call it.
Well, publicly I'm not, but then our reality, we're no sugarcoating for this group that's, there's.
If we can.
She has it, because I'm not putting that out on Facebook, you know, I'm just saying this is, this is how slim we really are. It's lean as we've ever been and it's always been lean, but it is, it has really come to.
It's been leaner than this.
A skeletal.
It's, it's always hard. It really is. Thank God for the people who volunteer. I mean, seriously, if anybody knows and appreciates it, it's us sitting here. I mean, it's just, it can sometimes be a thankless job. But then those moments come when things work out and people are dancing in the streets and you think, well, I guess it was worth it, you know? So, you know, let's, let's shoot for that.
Try not to get too down.
Yeah.
So is the chance.
Yeah, and thank you for all you've done so far. We know all of you. You, you probably honestly don't get the recognition you need from, from the village.
No, but they never have. Like, it's not just us. It's people before us and before them and it's always been the case. It's always let somebody else take care of it. I'll come and have fun, but you take care of the rest. We're hopeful, but that's where we sleep. So I wanted to, I always.
No, no, we appreciate your coming forward and making us aware of the situation. So it means a lot to us, so.
Means a lot to, to the village.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all do a lot.
So stay in touch with the committee for the tree lighting. And we'll, we'll get a table set up and take care of it for you.
That's what we can do.
Okay, if you wanna stay, you're welcome to stay, or if not, we'll, you can take a line. And if anything comes up that you need assistance from the village in the meanwhile, I hope you'll contact me or the office, you know? Leave us a message, we ask for help if something.
Well, and you, most of you have, right, have taken information as well. So if you're hearing anybody, you know, who can direct them to me and we're, everything's happening. I sat down, kind of, looking at reframing roles because the biggest thing is what do you need from me? It's like, well, the way I got in and most of us was like, well, just show up and, uh, just what can you pick up? And it's, it helps, it's saying.
Right, this is what you need.
This is what I need, is this in your skill set and would you be willing to do this?
Well, that's the best thing though, if you know where, where.
And if you're, we need January, if we, if you have more people coming in, it can all be started out. It may be a big relief for you.
And does anybody know, are we having the vendors this year? At the Christmas, like we had started.
Jennifer hasn't said yet, but we do have Sandra coming and the band.
The school band, you heard, like a band band or the school band?
The band we had, well, the, the three-piece or four-piece band.
Oh, J U B.
Yeah, J U B. I know they're gonna be here for a couple hours and I don't know about the school band. Jennifer has really.
Yeah, they're gonna be here for the.
Well, cause I was like, if you get those vendors, we'll invite them to be vendors at Strawberry Festival.
Right, right. There were, how many, do you remember? I mean, last year, maybe six?
I was one of them.
And once again, they say they're gonna come, but then if the weather goes, then they.
Well, I figure they're willing to come outside when it's cold, but Strawberry Festival is easy sell. Yes, we'll work on it, we'll work on it.
Sounds good. Thanks, thank you for coming today. I'm such your host.
Well, we came up with one today.
We got it, it's got the next step.
It was yours.
Okay, moving on to the next item on our new business, which would be item two, strike painting by PK on the village streets. We have approximately, if we include all of Forest Street and all of Elmwood Street, east and west, and then also Division and East Street by the school, we have approximately eleven thousand five hundred and sixty feet of paved roadway that needs to be striked for traffic. Now that involves four lines, basically the double yellow. We don't have any passing zones in the village. So it's double yellow for two miles, well, for all of that line, plus the two outside white stripes, which are, they're not mandatory per se, but, but they're really, they're. That makes a difference. It's the safety thing, you know? They wear away first usually, that's the first thing to go, but. The county has a contractor who also happens to be PK contracting. But they, the county uses thermoplastic striping, which is considerably more expensive. It is more durable, but our experience with it has been that you, you have to do it every other year anyways. And some of our painted lines last a couple of years anyways. Often we just like, we'll strike Forest Street and not do it, although because the stripes hold up. So.
What's the comparison durability between the paint or the plastic?
Well, there's, there's basically three options. There are two water-based paints that are, one, one has a durability of about a year. But with our traffic, it's, it's not like M24 or the Rochester Road for itself. And they do make a water soluble that is a heavier overlay. It's a little heavier paint and they say that it has a two-year durability. Thermoplastic is a minimum of two years. But in our experience, and we had thermoplastic both times when we did Forest Street back in 2011 and then when we did Elmwood Street in 2017, they put thermoplastic down and. Two, it went two years and then needed to be redone.
Does it peel off or does it?
No, it doesn't, it disintegrates.
Oh, you say you can sometimes see a little over.
Yeah, if it's not applied right, it does kind of look like a tape. But it is sprayed on.
How about cost?
Big difference in the cost and I, I solicited a quote from PK. County doesn't send us, they don't offer us the service anymore of contracting through them because we have to pay them fifteen percent of whatever we spend at PK as a due strator. And so I, we quit using them about six, seven years ago, maybe longer, eight years ago. And so they don't even off, they don't even send us a notice. And, and, but it used to be, it was, for thermoplastic, it was about ten cents eight years ago a foot and a water-based was seven or eight cents a foot. So I, I use ten cents as a basis for calculating, but it, I honestly can't say what it'll be. But thanks to Alex, we worked out the cost. If it is ten cents a foot for doing all of that footage, it would be about four thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
For the thermal?
No, for, for light, for the water base, water base.
First one or the water base that's heavier?
The first one.
The first one.
Which is what we've always used in the past.
And you, and you're making that happen?
Yeah, I mean, generally because.
We don't have the track.
Exactly.
It looks, looks nice if it's somebody that's here.
Yeah, you're right. And we haven't done East Street and Division in quite a long time.
How long has it been?
Uh, probably it's thirteen years, it's a long.
Really?
Oh, I remember.
Really, that long? That's got longevity, sure.
Well, there's, there's.
Before that.
Yeah, I couldn't say. So that's why I would like to get it all done. And the thing is, is I don't have a baseline cost. I, I sent an email today, I sent a request to their main, to their main office before Labor Day and I don't know if it got lost in the mail or what, so.
Are they still doing it this year?
Yeah, they have, we have basically October, no later than October.
Yeah.
You should hope.
Yeah.
Is it, is it, is it a better result if it's warmer, if the wind's warmer or does it?
Generally, generally, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I really wouldn't wanna wait until our next meeting to decide to do this. But I also can't give you an exact, an exact cost because I haven't got a quote. So I was hoping that maybe we could authorize the village to go ahead and procure, procure the quote from PK because they're the, they're local, we're not gonna get a better deal from a road strip.
Now, this one doesn't know, is that was for the first application that's on there now? That was for the original application?
Well.
Just as your estimate, right?
No.
Okay, I just wondered, there's how much placing is going on?
Yeah, well, that's what I don't know. That's why I, I asked for a quote.
Cause at the sentence, I asked for four and I estimated ten, so now we can.
I'm at the minimum of ten, to be honest, because with gas and, and chemical costs, I'm sure they've all gone up, so. So if you give me a, I'd like to make a motion that we propose a not to exceed bid of five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars for the road striping in the Village of Leonard, eleven thousand five thou, or eleven thousand five hundred and fifty. A second that. So like if you give fifty cents per foot.
And then you don't use it?
And, no, before, was there a second on the motion?
Yeah.
So for discussion purposes, if I, if that isn't enough money, and I, I did ask for the water, cold water and the thermoplastic. If, if there is enough money, shall I just do as much as I can? I mean, I can probably drop off, I mean, it gets complicated telling the trucks, you know?
I would say use your discretion as to how far off we are. I mean, if we are, you know, we're docking almost six thousand dollars and if they come back, I mean, I think you need us to actually give. Okay, but if they come back and they say it's six thousand dollars, then just don't do East Street or something like that. I mean, if there's people that they are going to East Street.
I can, I can legally, I can go up to five hundred dollars legally, five hundred more on my own authority. And actually I'm using the U P W's authority because they're, it's under them.
So that I'm.
So that would take us to what, sixty?
Sixty-two.
That should get you almost at fifty-two cents. If everybody's comfortable with that, the motion, you get a motion in the second. All in favor of the motion to authorize PK, PK. Yeah, but I'm stating the motion.
Oh, sorry.
I was trying. It takes me a while to get there, I don't know. We have motion in the second to authorize the village to contract with PK contracting to strike the paved streets in the Village of Leonard not to exceed five thousand.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred and eighty dollars for that. For that work, for that.
Would you go up to five hundred?
Yeah, yeah, no authority.
The only thing I said was for the, the footage of the village, for that.
Okay.
That's fine, we can start that.
You got that moved?
If you wanna read it back, that might be helpful, just cause sometimes when somebody or Jackson mount a motion, I, I sort of lose my train of thought with what I'm writing. That's okay, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, you know.
I took liberties with Alex's motion, so. We authorize, we author, the village authorizes contracting with PK contracting for striping the village paved streets at a cost not to exceed five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Got it, okay. Thank you, appreciate you reading that back.
No. Okay, so with that, you have a roll call for approval?
Absolutely. Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Belichick? McDonald?
Yes.
Swack? Yes.
Okay, thank you for indulging. I wish I had more information on this. I realize what time of year it was and how some of the streets don't look good, so. Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. All right, um, next item is another expenditure request. Um, as part of the Village Park project, um, there, we need to have some borings taken so the engineers can determine how to build the space for the pathways that are going to be limestone, most likely limestone, protected limestone, like the Paliant Trail. And the cost, uh, is estimated at six thousand dollars, um, which would come out of the Recreation Donation Fund. So, um, once again, uh, I don't have an exact amount, but they're going to have to do it this month in order to complete the project by November. So, um, if you, if you can see your way clear to give me a little leeway on that, maybe call it seven thousand dollars and, uh, I'll try to, you know, tailor accordingly if you, if there's a motion like that.
I would like a motion to allow expenditures up to seven thousand dollars for the boring samples to be taken at the Village Park. One second.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion in the second then authorize up to seven thousand dollars for boring samples for the Leonard Nature Park project.
Leonard, you're saying that comes out of the, uh?
The donation, donation, donation of funds.
So that should come from the village?
No, well, it's for money that was donated to the village specifically for that purpose. And this isn't new, that we were aware that, that we would have to do this. It's just now we're gonna, we're running on by, so. So we have a vote call?
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack? Yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Belichick? Yes. Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carried. Hey, under Old Business, um, I just wanted to update the council of the village on forty-two eighty-five Forest Street. Um, the, uh, owners were not represented and did not show up at the hearing. The judge found, um, gave us a default judgment. Um, after twenty-one days, which we just recently passed after that judgment, we can now go back to court and ask for the right to enter the property and, and examine the structure to find out whether the structure is salvageable or whether we should, you know, uh, look at it as a hazardous building and make appropriate repairs or it could, it could end up in, uh, removal, so.
So our building's what you're, you're going in?
Yeah, it, if the court said it gives us the permission to do so, which is, I would expect it will. Um, yes, our building inspector could then legally enter the premises, take a look at what's going on with the structure and determine whether it's safe or hazardous. And it, you know, at this point, it's got three or four feet of water in the basement. It's got a relatively, a couple of large holes in the roof. Um, you can see through, uh, the holes extend through the drywall insides and there, the neighbors have reported seeing raccoons going in and out of the holes. So, so, um, it's not a good situation. Uh, the septic has failed, uh, as I understand it, the homeowners have had been there. So, um.
It's not bad yet.
It's hard. You know, five years ago, it wouldn't have been that bad, to be honest. Now, yeah, but now.
Every day it's, it's, it's worse. And the owners are just not responding?
They don't, they do not respond.
So is they just, that might maybe written out, they still gotta pay taxes on that property, right?
They're, they're, my understanding is, is they're, if they don't pay soon, they'll be going to tax sale.
A tax sale, so then someone would buy, uh, for the property and that.
Well, which is how they acquired it, yeah. Basically, when, when they don't pay the county, uh, the taxes paid, the county can't. The county then puts it on the sheriff's sale list for.
Okay.
Sell, they sell it for what they can get.
So it's not salvage for the house itself, it's the property?
It depends on the situation.
Yeah, you gotta get the water and, uh, subjects fail, it's a big expense.
It is, I mean, if you, if somebody got it for the right price, I can own, maybe it's salvageable. Then again, it was never in great shape. It was never in great shape. Since I've lived here, the people that live there, um, it's in better shape now though than it is when I first lived here because one of the tenants rebuilt the whole, um, first floor. They literally tore all the first floor out and replaced the joists and flooring. So that part was better. The upstairs, I think all the drywalls come down and most of the roofs.
I'm sure there's quite a community of our friends. I'm sure there's.
Yeah, this year is a bad one for.
That's their favorite thing.
There's a lot of ruins and a lot of, um, um.
Possessions getting made.
Possessions around.
Bats.
Groundhogs, yeah.
And they don't come.
Yeah. So. So anyway, um, my, my intent, I don't, I, unless there's an objection, my intent is, and I've already requested that the village attorney schedule us to get back to court and get this done, so.
So there's no, there's no timeline yet?
No, nothing yet.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, under Old Business, uh, CDBG reallocation, this has turned into a bit of a convoluted bureaucratic situation. And Lori, maybe you could give us a brief update?
Sure. We have some funds that can be re- reallocated for use in the village. My hope was at the last meeting, we could use it for sidewalks and we absolutely cannot. Um, essentially what it has kind of come down to is they lumped the whole village at census into one grouping and we're not able to use any low-income funds for anything, which just eliminates a large amount of CDBG money. I got a great idea that maybe could be used for the mill, but I am having some struggles getting approval for that project moving forward. If I can get approval for that, we could have a meeting and reprogram some funds to be used for a small project at the mill, maybe something just around ten thousand dollars. So that's just kind of, um, there's something that works. I'm hoping something will handle it.
And if they don't approve something at the mill, do we just need to get residents to apply and actually use something? Or they, just something has to fail, right?
Well, uh, we, we risk losing.
We risk losing.
The, the remove architecture, removing architectural barriers money from three years ago. That's, that's what we're talking about, reallocating. So, so yeah, we might have to meet anyways, reallocate that if, had the threat of losing it.
I mean, nobody right now needs a ramp or needs a.
Well, it's in a.
It's in the wrong category. We would move it, we would look at moving it into the minor home repair program.
And then find somebody who needs something.
And then it would be available for somebody to correct any.
Now, what a ramp being a home repair would be an architectural barrier?
Minor home repair.
Okay, so architectural barriers or.
It's, it's kind of a misnom, misleading, not exact phrase, I call it. Remove architectural barriers. Um, it's, it's basically to, uh, make adaptations for ADA access and things like that.
It's something that's already.
Is there a term limit on how long we can?
There is, extension's been filed. We have about four more months on that extension.
How long has it been showing?
Three, oh.
Three years?
When we, when we go through our block grant meeting, um, the funds that we are allocated by the county are good for three years. Now, the county would like to see us spend those the first year. They don't want us, they want that money spent, they don't want it sitting in an account. So we're doing our best to try and.
And there's somebody in Addison that could use it or they couldn't?
We have done that before.
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, and Addison's done it for us too. But at the moment, no, there's nothing, yeah.
There's, there's things that can be done. You know, there's also one year, we gave the money to Haven.
Yeah.
Which, um, is a wonderful organization too. So that, if, if I don't get the answers I need really soon, um, you know, within the next couple of weeks, you know, we're just gonna have to have a conversation at the next meeting about what we're going to do. We have to.
So Shane, just let her go. Because if you let it go, you may lose it in the future, right?
No.
Okay.
If you let it go, it's that, whatever that amount is, yeah, that goes back to the county and then they spend it.
Yeah, that's not.
Like the Haven's.
Oh, so that's kind of insane.
Right, so.
So people have to apply?
Yeah, if a resident.
In the village?
A resident.
Do they, do people know this?
Well, most people do, well, most low, low economic, it's low me, low medium, um, income.
They don't have to get a buck on?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we've been doing this program in the village for thirty years.
Some of the, I have recommended to somebody, hey, have your dad do this. And dad's too proud to call for something like this. He's a complete perfect candidate to have this stuff used, but he won't do it, so.
What, and what we, what I try to tell people that may have some reluctance is it's a retired confidential, um, process. When, when, when we, when we receive an application, um, we, all we ask for is a ten forty, a copy of their last ten forty. We don't ask, we don't need to see their bank accounts, we don't want to see all of that. Their ten forty is sufficient for us to determine their income level and their qualifications. You know, we need to know the number of people, we need to know if it's a, if it's a painting or a interior, uh, construction project, the lending rules apply, just like they do for everybody. And that does complicate things considerably, but it doesn't make it impossible. It's just, so we, we can very easily do wells, furnaces, um.
Something.
Septic systems, some, yeah, uh, air, uh, ductwork, things like that. That's, those are all eligible projects. We don't dig into their finances beyond what is presented on their ten forty. So some people that have goods, some people have savings. If, but if they reported it to the IRS, then that number will be there, but most, most people don't. I mean, so, um. And it wouldn't, and it doesn't disqualify them because what we're looking for is their income. You know, just the big in, it's an income.
Do they almost have a timer that's why they're?
Well, we have, um, Lori, we have files upstairs that we have applications. We have the guidelines for income, um, for the program for twenty-twenty-three, so, um.
My son right now is like, right now is the worst time to lose money because it's getting cold.
Yeah.
Or is there any to be serviced?
And, and a senior with a tree problem, something like that, we can do that. Take a tree down or, or whatever, so, um, we do that. We've done that a lot over the years, but we don't, we do, you know, one every other year or whatever.
And there's more, there's more that's needed, they just don't apply.
We, if, well, we can contribute, if they can contribute and maybe if they need a well, that's six or seven thousand dollars, we can go five thousand dollars on the well. Sometimes we can go more, um, just depends on what we have available, you know? So right now, we can cover that.
But they're aware that they can just go, the village and, and.
Well, we used to, we used to publish a newsletter regularly. It's been some years since we did, but, but yeah, generally, um, most people seem to know about it. I mean, I, I'll pay it, I can't think, I know one senior citizen here in the village that has a tree, um, they, it's, it was broken in the, broken in the storm, but it's still alive, you know, from fifteen feet up down. It's, but it's not really attractive.
So they have to take that for a step?
So yeah, yeah, it, it actually, well, it starts with the village, you know? I think most people know that we're here with that program. Um, it's just that nobody takes, you know, either can't or doesn't take advantage of it. The thing is, is that if, if somebody came here every year and we don't, we get, we allocate four or five thousand dollars into it, um, sometimes it takes more money than that. Um, so if it doesn't happen for a year or two, then we have enough money where somebody with a septic field, something that, somebody that needs six, seven, eight thousand dollars will have the money and we might not authorize. Uh, right now, we're, we have significant money, which shouldn't be a problem for a tree or for a minor home repair. So that's what, that's kind of like our job. You know, if you hear neighbor or somebody that's having a problem and needs help, it's, it's, you can suggest it to them, but like you said, some people just don't want it. You know, they're just not gonna accept help. We had that problem at Christmas in Athens. You know, people would just very reluctant to accept.
Yeah, they don't, they don't want.
They'd be hostile to anything, yeah.
You know, what I tried to tell them, the taxes that they're paying.
Yes.
For so many years, you've been here your entire life, you've paid into this. Please pay the funds, get, get the repair.
That's what it's for. It's for the community, and it helps the community where people keep their houses up and they're safe and you can live there safely for a long time. Take advantage of it.
And you're saying septic field, somebody's fails and they don't have room to do another field?
That's a little bit of pressure.
Yeah, I'd say it's too engineered, that might be too complicated.
Can you re-engineer a field on site once it's failed?
Well, what they do is, the county usually says, if you can't fix your septic system and you have to put in a package treatment plan, then you're, you're talking more money than we have. That's thirty, forty thousand dollars. But that's really the only solution for small lots with barely enough room for a field. You know, that's.
So it cannot be re-engineered and, uh?
I don't think they go over top of what's there.
You can't, you can't, you can't dig it out and put, put it in there?
You know, I don't know, I, I don't know what they, what.
I mean, in other ways, they've noticed it, right?
Right, well, yeah, standard septic system now, you can't get them done for ten, twelve thousand dollars. You know, just a basic replacement field is, and that's without, you know, no engineered field. That's just a basic septic roof, probably, but we can help.
But like I said, hot water tanks, um, AC, the furnaces, roofs, you know, slight roof repair, steps going down, rotten wood, things like that.
Yeah, we've done roofs.
Yeah. That's been very fast.
Okay.
Okay, Lori, thank you. Stay on it. You've done a wonderful job this far, you've introduced some good ideas that we could, we could and should look at.
And what will we get mentioned on that?
Okay, EPW update, um, we burned the burn pile. I did put a no dumping sign on it and right now apparently there's dumping. There's already dump branches behind it.
They don't read.
So, so, um, in fairness, I don't think any of us would have a problem with a few branches or whatever.
And it's our, it's our, that tires and.
Well, and knock on wood, we have not had any tires come in there. But for the first time, we had concrete, bricks, um, and a lot of tree, uh, tree trunks. You know, people just cut wood and then just dropped it off there. And I think, uh, and some of them were not from, uh, they weren't from the village, they were from outside. So hopefully the sign will discourage those people and I don't, I don't see us getting upset because the village EPW burn, we burn our, you know, when something comes down on the street or whatever, a branch or whatever, we, we kick it back there, cut it up and burn it periodically. But it, it, it's just that in all these years, we've never seen the amount of dumping, you know, that's, that's happened there and so.
What did I put up the sign that says, I'm more dumping?
Well, I put up a sign that says, uh, no dumping, um, violators will be prosecuted or whatever. I mean, yeah, we do have ordinances that say no dumping, but the fire department is up, basically has informally said, you know, it's better for us if people would burn at burn pile, community burn pile, instead of in their backyards or near their homes and their garages. It's, it's safer for everybody. And so, you know, it's a kind of double-edged sword, um, uh, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. If, if, if people have a wagon, you know, wheelbarrow full of branches and stuff that they can't get rid of it, and, you know, on their own, then I don't think we're gonna get upset about it. I'm not putting up a video cam, yeah. Trying to catch anyone.
You're just gonna pay me now, you know, five bucks to get in. You're just gonna paint it now, you know, five hours to get it in.
Yeah, yeah. And who's gonna man it, it's like, it's probably possible, you gotta, you gotta cost money. The other part about the EPW is I have yet to get the truck worked on. I have, we've, you know, checked the oil and done everything on it, but it's still, finding, finding a mechanic to do it.
The stuff Kurt will do.
Kurt, Kurt does not wanna do it, so I'm still working on that, but.
Would like the hauler guy, the guy that has the steering wheel, he know I got? The truck guy?
The starter?
Yeah.
He does his own.
Oh.
So, no, I did talk to him about it. They're too busy.
He was the biggest trucker.
Yeah, yeah. I have one other contractor that I've got a few results to see if his mechanic might wanna.
Do you need somebody to come here and do it?
Either way, I mean, Kurt used to come down and do it in the village garage when he, when he did it in the past, so either way, we're good. Okay, and then for my report, we had no FOIA requests, at least none at our home, and we did not receive any CDBG applications. And for ordinance enforcement, forty-two eighty-five Forest is still the only active enforcement that, that we're currently engaged in. For the trustee committee reports, Summer Festival Committee, I think we covered that, didn't we? Scandal commission, anything down there?
Last name was Ken, son, somebody had siblings.
Sounds good. Decorated committee, I see the fall, fall decorations are up and rolling.
Starting, starting weird with the farmers.
Yeah, there you go.
Jennifer did ask me to ask for some money. Well, the tree wedding is going to be Sunday, December tenth, from four to six. She's asking for road closing from two thirty to seven thirty.
Okay. We can do that in November.
What's that?
Close the road, we don't have to do it today, you know, we don't have to, we'll, we'll handle that in November.
No, November what?
I read it.
Oh, the meeting, oh, okay. So I bring it up again? Okay.
Yeah, basically remind, remind you.
Remind you, okay.
Yeah.
So hers, her list is, we have two more planters this year, so she was asking for two hundred and fifty dollars for the greens that we put into the center of the planters. The band, she's already scheduled, already has secured two hundred dollars for two hours. And Santa, usually, when he goes to other programs, he gets paid a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. When he's speaking, he's never asked for us. Jennifer was afraid of losing him, she was, she would like to, in good faith, give him a hundred and fifty dollars for the two hours, and he usually stays close to the tree.
Okay.
Plus, he comes in, like, a good hour before to set up the slab and get everything, everything prepared. So she would like that hundred fifty, and then a two hundred dollars for the courtyard, which keeps people out of here. And she said the village covered this last year? I don't know. And so it's like eight hundred dollars.
Okay. And so, do we wanna authorize, go ahead and authorize that at this time?
She said, I mean, it should probably be less for the greens, it depends on how, what's that, what's that nursery of, no, she goes there every year for the, for the greens, so we invented more, felt that way. Anyway, gel, something gel. Anyway, she said they usually donate a few, so.
Bojo?
Bojo.
So they, they have over, to, you have over a thousand dollars, right closer to fifteen hundred available right now.
Okay, good.
Between beautification and labor.
Yeah, and we don't have to do, we don't have the added expense this year of the decorated benches, the lights, because it's, it's all permanent stuff, so we just can, can pitch it up and we flip it out.
Just give the labor to get the lights up, we'll do it then.
Or the, the street, the street stuff, yes.
Yeah, it, it won't be six hundred dollars, so, you know, whatever.
And then plus last year, refurbished the, the two big lanterns for the mill, refurbished, refurbished the big reef, so all of those were expenses that went into that, but those are done.
So, does council want to go ahead and approve the expenditures detailed at this time?
Up to eight fifty, so I will make a, I will make a motion to approve up to eight fifty for greens, JD, JD and V band, Santa and the courtyard, and the holiday festival, just something.
One second. Okay, are there any questions on the motion? Here, none, we have a roll call, please, Lori?
Sure. Swack?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Hendy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Elchick?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Donna. All right. North Oakland Transportation Authority, parking lot at the facility is still being worked on. I think I mentioned last month that NODA has expanded into Brandon Township and is looking at Independence and Springfield Township, providing service. They've also extended their range, they're, they're going further south to, oh gosh, I'm not sure how far south, I think it's almost the Pontiac or it is Pontiac. So, and so that's not, that's where they'll travel to, that's not where they'll pick, I mean, they'll take somebody, they'll take a resident there, but they're not bringing anybody from there here, so to speak, so. It's just part of.
Where is this parked in that?
At, it's on Glassby Street, where the NODA facility is.
Okay.
And we're, it's a two hundred thousand dollar project, we're redoing the entire parking lot, installing lighting and a gasoline service station, basically, to do the buses and stuff. So, and all of it's being paid for, knock on wood, under that mileage that we are all paying for, so. Hopefully things work out. Planning Commission, I'm not aware of anything active, are you Lori?
We met last month and there's no plans for us to meet this month.
Okay, thank you.
So I will make a roll call right now to cancel the September planning commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Second? Jennifer, you need to talk to her.
Hey, way to jump in there. Okay, there's a motion to cancel the regular planning commission meeting for September. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, please say no. Okay, motion carried. Palion Trail, they're starting to wrap things up, there's gonna be one, a big trail cutting again this year. They have a contractor come in with a large cutting implements, mowers and grinders, trying to keep the trail pushed back, so that probably will be until the leaves fall, we're definitely gonna do that, so. Village parks, that's a project, the village park's the only thing, the park project's the only thing that we got going on for that right now. Be developed a block grant. Did we give a summary? Yeah, we got summaries, probably a couple months old now, wasn't it, that we got from the.
Have a summary of what we have available and what we've spent. Yeah, I just don't, do we do that?
We haven't spent any money, so, it's wherever it was, you know, that, that boggles my mind that they still get, there's still.
I agree with the system?
Yeah.
Just great, okay.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't have any correspondence or anything further, does any others remember? If it's not, other big motion may turn.
Second.
Is there a second?
I did.
No, I didn't hear it. Not anymore. Okay, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, please say no. All right, thank you so much.